We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, September the 11th, 2025. Our invocation will be done by Overseer Priscilla Quinn of the Ephraim International Community Church and Outreach Services. After that, we'll have the Mayor Pro Tem who will lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Please stand for the invocation.
May we all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, source of all wisdom and grace, we gather today as the legislation of Douglasville. First, let us give honor to the nearly 3,000 who lost their lives this day on September the 11th, over 400 responders and other law officials who took the courage and risk and sacrifice while other first responders lost their lives. May we focus on seeking strength to overcome the fear and hate and fostering in a spirit of unity, peace in the face of tragedy on this day. Twenty-four years have passed, but for others, it's only happened today, knowing that forgiveness is our main source of strength. Now, the legislation of Douglasville is grateful for the opportunity to serve the residents of this community, and we humbly ask for your guidance in all our deliberations. As we undertake the important work that come before us, we pray for clarity of thought, priority of intention. Help them to set aside personal agendas and to approach each decision with an open mind and a heart dedicated to the common good. May they listen carefully to one another respectfully, the diversity outlook, and seeking understanding above all else. Grant them the wisdom to make decisions that will foster a vibrant and thriving city for all. Inspire them to consider the needs of every individual, from the most honorable to the most prosperous, to strive for equality and justice in every policy they put in place. Give them courage to change any policy, procedure, or legislation rule that will hinder the growth of this city. May their discussion be branded by integrity, courtesy, and with a genuine spirit of teamwork. Help them to remember that they are here to build up, not to tear down. They're here to unite and not to divide. I pronounce protection and blessing upon the city, the residents, the businesses and organizations. May their effort here today contribute to a stronger, safer, and more prosperous future for everyone who called Douglasville a home. In all things, may their work reflect a commitment to Douglasville residents who voted for them because they trust them with their community. Amen, and so shall it be.
Thank you so much, Overseer Quinn, for the prayer and proclamation and encouragement. We really appreciate that, and we know today that we will honor and remember those who lost their lives 24 years ago during 9/11, praying for their families still. So I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken this evening. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight at our meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. There are a few protocol items I need to bring to your attention before we start the meeting. I ask that you please listen closely so that there will be no misunderstandings on how tonight's meeting will be conducted. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair or to be of a personal attack on any person or individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from that warning, a second deviation will result in us asking you to leave the meeting. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. When you're at the podium, we ask that you would just address your concerns and comments to myself and council members. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and we will not accept public comments on agenda items before this council that were not discussed during that public hearing portion for that particular item. Some of the meeting is over. We ask you not to come and repeat comments or concerns or issues based on items that were at the public hearing that you didn't bring before the public hearing. We won't accept the comments after during the legislative, to accept information from delegates, excuse me. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask you please put those in silent mode so they won't be disruptive during the meeting. And this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson or representative will read that agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our determination for next Monday during the meeting where we're voting. After that, committee chairperson, if it's a public hearing, will ask for those that are in favor of the item to come up, and there are 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. The timekeeper is from our city clerk's office, and they'll let you know if you go beyond your time. After that, the committee chairperson will possibly ask any clarifying questions, and if you want to speak, there are speaker cards outside. I think there's a form. You'll have to fill the form out, and you can hand it to our Assistant City Manager or Deputy City Manager that is sitting to my left, and they will put that information in for the record. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address, and then you can proceed, and you have five minutes to talk. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. Blah, 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 blah. I think that's it. If you have any printed materials that you want to give to us, please give it to our clerk's office. They'll make copies and hand that information over to myself and council members. Now we will move on with our committees, and we do have some council members that are in training this evening, so we don't have all of the council members here, but we do have a quorum, so we're able to continue with the information that's presented. Our first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item this evening under the Economic Development Committee, and that is to adopt a resolution to approve Norhaven Partners LLC's participation in the city's revised 2020 tax plan and execution and delivery of a tax incentives agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the tax incentive agreement. And the ever-resourful Mr. Chris Pumphrey is here to give us a description of this plan.
I was wondering what the intro was going to be today. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be with you all. Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street. Here this evening, as mentioned, to discuss the tax incentive agreement for Norhaven Partners, who is developing the balance of the Town Green Project. I know you all are very familiar with this project already, and we're all very excited about this actually finally coming to fruition and closing the latter part of this year. This was an essential tax incentive package. This piece right here is a required component of the overall incentive package that makes the project financially feasible and allows it to move forward as designed. What the abatement also does is enables higher-end finishes and residential amenities that would not otherwise be possible without the support. As we all know, this project is the development of 257 new units in downtown Douglasville, along with 8,000-plus square feet of retail space. That's going to be bringing small businesses and restaurants into the downtown. So we work very closely with the developer and his team in kind of working through the incentive plan itself and finding something that met their needs and worked with the financial markets, and I'm here to present that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. This is a very exciting development. I mean, we already have very good, strong downtown, but this is going to really bring it alive.
It is.
Is there any more detail that you want to provide on the structure of the tax incentive package itself?
Yeah, so about five years ago, we approved, we did a revision to our tax incentives plan that basically gave us three tiers of support. That third tier is what we call transformative, is for transformative projects, this being one, that brings new residential development into the downtown with the retail piece associated with it. And so we worked very closely with them on trying to identify a plan that worked for them, but also allow for the financial component to come together. So being a tier three, it doesn't fit within our normal schedule that we will present to you all, where it's based on jobs, investment, and wages. We had to really customize something, and that's what that tier three component allows us to do, is to customize that plan. Overall, it's a 12-year plan where they're exempted through the construction in progress for the first two years, and then it carries forward for the balance of the 10 years under a normal schedule.
And then after 10 years, all incentives go away, basically?
All incentives go away, and they're held to making sure that they have that two-year window. Once that two-year clock hits, construction isn't complete, then the regular plan commences.
And to be clear to all folks who don't realize, this is a $65 million investment in our downtown.
Correct, and you know, the city has made tremendous amount of investments into this area already to date with the building of the amphitheater, the acquiring of the land, the building of the amphitheater, and the additional parcels. And so you're leveraging that investment that you've made for this $65 million private investment into the community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. I'll open the floor. Madam Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just excitement.
Okay. Any questions or comments from this side?
No.
I think we, okay, I think we're good. Well, we appreciate the hard work you've done on this, and it's an exciting new day for downtown Douglasville and the entire region, really.
Congrats to you all.
Thanks. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Our finance chair had to leave, so the vice chair is Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have a few items on the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir.
First up is item number 25-250. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract of auction agreement with RJO Auction Company for auction services to take place on November 29th, 2025. We discussed this at our committee meeting earlier, but Ms. Burdette is going to go through it for us again.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Melissa Burdette, 8485 Courthouse Square West, and this item is a contract to auction off equipment that we will no longer need or has a useful life for our needs.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to ask that this be placed on the consent agenda. And then we will move on to the next item, number 25-372. Authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Four to the agreement with Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC for the City Hall Construction Project Architectural Services in the amount not to exceed $2,515,542.78 to be paid from SPOST 2022 Facilities Fund. And we have Jacob Adams here to discuss this with us.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Jacob Adams, 4150 Ashford Dunwoody Road, Brookhaven, Georgia. And I'm here to present on the update amendment to GMC's contract to establish a new not-to-exceed total contract amount of $2.5 million. So I ask the two main things that we want to touch on with the conclusion of their amendment and where we got to where we're currently at is, one, the increase in square footage. So from the previously approved original amendment of their contract, we've increased the square footage of the building by roughly 14,300 square feet. Included in that is roughly 3,000 square feet of shelf space to provide future expansion for new and future employees, as well as the added council chamber that we've included into the building package. Additionally, with the increase in the total project square footage, is also the upgrades to utility infrastructure. So consisting of that is obviously the civil design that will take place with that, but also the modifications that are going to be made in the alley space behind the building, as well as the relocation for the utility infrastructure in front of the building to be located underground to really bring out the facade of that building from Church Street. So implemented in that is the design coordination that will take place to ensure that that work is completed, as well as the upgrades that are going to be made to the alley space, as well as the tie-in of the building into the current city plaza. So those are the two main factors that contribute to the increase in the total GNP of the building. The cost per square foot has not changed since the original contract. This is solely based on the design fee for the increase in the GNP cost per square foot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That make sense? Just increasing the square footage increases the price. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey.
I'm shocked.
Having written a number of these contracts myself and looked it over, I do see that it is well within a fair and equitable range. The bottom line comes down to it's, it looks like you kept the fee at about roughly 7% of the cost of construction, which is within normal contract range for architects. So looking at your hourly rates, I do realize I do need to raise my hourly rate, though. But other than that, yeah, it looks perfectly fine, so.
Very good. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Great, thank you all.
And I would also like to have this added to the consent agenda for Monday night.
That's fine.
And we will move on to our third item, number 25-373. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract for construction and incorporated general conditions with Triscape LLC for RFP 2025-002 Fowler Field Park Improvements Project in the amount of $1,399,558.87 to be paid from SPOST 2022. And we have Ms. Alicia Mann here to go through it.
Okay. Greetings, Madam Mayor, Council. Alicia Mann, 6695 Church Street. What you have before you today is an agreement with Triscape LLC for the Fowler Field Improvements Project. This will enhance Fowler Field, as well as upgrades for safety accessibility and community use. The scope for this will be replacing the existing asphalt with new asphalt, as well as the addition of a wooden boardwalk that'll be on the side closest to the parking area. It's going to be raised just a few inches, just because that side of the park does flood.
Right.
There's an addition of the rain garden. You'll also have some outdoor equipment, so you'll have like lap pulldowns, chest lift, any equipment you can use to work outside. It'll also have shaded structures over that outdoor equipment. You'll have some steel archways that'll be at the walkway of the entrance next to the playground, installation of new buildings, as well as covered picnic tables by the playground, as well as pet stations and some landscaping upgrades.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Any questions, comments? Madam Mayor.
I do. Thanks so much, Mr. Vice Chair.
I do have a question, Ms. Mann. Thank you for the presentation. I'm excited about this, too. So for Fowler Field, I know we won some type of award in the Parks Department. Was that for the infrastructure? Is there, so is there anything being done for mitigation of, I know we're making adjustments because it floods in Fowler Field. Is there anything to divert the water, infrastructure? Was that that grant that we had before, or does this address that?
So by the workout equipment, it'll be using that rubber surface, kind of like you see at the playground, so it's pervious, and it'll also have some drainage under there that'll kind of take some of that water out, as well as your rain garden will also have drainage over there as well.
Okay.
And then the grant is for the lifetime of the project, so it's, so 75,000 of that grant was used at the beginning of this project, so doing your feasibility, your surveys and all that, et cetera. And then the remaining will come from SPOST.
Okay, okay. So some of the, so some of these things are to help with the drainage, and then the other is just to kind of, like you were talking, I think it was something you said was raised up or something that's going to help?
Yeah, so your wooden boardwalk is on the further side, away from the creek on your further side. It's going to be raised just a few inches because we are limited on what we can do because it is a floodway. So that's just going to help so that people can still walk and use that side of the trail even when it rains.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Councilman Davis?
Yes, on the backside of where it floods, down in that deep ravine, would there be anything to keep a child or somebody from Wonder Rock falling in the deep? Would it be flooded?
Are you talking about the side closest to the creek?
Yes, that's a deep creek.
So we are limited on what we can do because of the, it isn't a floodway, so we can't increase any type of impervious surface. We'd have to go back to WSA, and just what we have approved now on these plans is what we were able to get approved by WSA. So as of now, it's just, we're just kind of maintaining the asphalt and resurfacing it.
Okay.
We can't put signage?
We could put signage or something there?
Right.
I'm sure we can put some signage. We can verify that with WSA, but I'm sure that wouldn't be.
Yes, a danger zone.
I see Mr. Bass coming forward, so I'm guessing he has something to add here.
Good evening, Chris Bass, 8830 Gurley Road. So as far as the safety when it does flood, we actually closed the park completely, so no one can go in that particular area that you're speaking to, Councilman Davis, when the park is flooded.
Is it closed with the gate?
Yes, ma'am, we have areas to, a way of blocking it off. The gate at the front entrance, we can close that gate completely when it's flooded.
Yeah, so I was just with Public Safety and Public Works Code Enforcement, so it's like a, I'm trying to think of material, like an iron gate or something, but it wouldn't still preclude someone from going in there, so maybe signage. You know, a kid can still, like something happened at Arbor Station, a little kid still got inside.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, fortunately, it doesn't, the water doesn't sit too long to where someone could actually go swimming in it. However, if a parent takes their child out there and intentionally send them down to the area, then there could be a safety risk. So I think we can put some more signage out there, but typically, we try to close the park off completely when that does happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mann. And I would also like to add this for the consent agenda for Monday's meeting.
Looks like it's going.
Please.
Yes, sir.
And our last item for finance tonight, item 25-385. Authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement between the city of Douglasville and PO Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of 6709 and 6713 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, in the amount of $932,000. And Ms. Hampton will go through this for us.
Thank you. There are two buildings that are contiguous to the current city hall space that you all were interested in acquiring so that we could maximize the square footage for the new location for City Hall, and by purchasing these two properties, that will allow us to do that. The purchase and sale agreement has been signed by the owner. The amount of funds, we will seek to get these reimbursed through our tax allocation district funding source. We have put, placed that application in, and that meeting should happen soon, but the city will be reimbursed through the tax allocation district funds that cover the cost of this property.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. City manager, once we disseminate or have this withdrawn from the TAD, what would our balance be approximately?
I'm not quite certain because we have active applications that are currently being reviewed by staff, but we can, the next time Ms. Callen does a budget amendment for you, we can let you know what our standing total.
Okay, just so we'll have the leverage, have that information, and then the leverage maybe to have other conversations. We know there are still some properties in the area that we would like to maybe acquire.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And since this is different from the others, I would not place this on the consent agenda since we have several council members absent this evening. But that means that is all we have for the Finance Committee tonight. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. Just keep your microphone on.
Oh, don't worry, I see that.
I know. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight for the Housing and Community Affairs Committee.
Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Estes is your show.
Sure is.
Organization Committee, Councilwoman Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item this evening.
Yes, sir.
Item number 25-362. Authorize the mayor to sign an application for the Georgia Municipal Association Safety and Liability Management Grant, and we will have Ms. Callen introduce this for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen Callen, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, 6695 Church Street. The Georgia Municipal Association Safety and Liability Management Grant application is for a grant in the amount of $20,000, and it's divided into two parts. $10,000 for workers' comp. Example, some eligible items are reflective or high-visibility gear, heat exposure, gas monitors, and training. And then $10,000 for liability items, and eligible items are defensive driving and other driver training, backup cameras, vehicle warning lights. But in your attachment, you have much more detail for you to look over. And then I have with me tonight, Ms. Erica Robinson. She is the one that manages this grant program and ensures that the city is compliant. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Erica, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So this grant is an annual grant that we have applied for, and we have been fortunate enough to be awarded the grant each year by Georgia Municipal Association. We completed training earlier this year to make sure that we were compliant, and we are again asking for your support of our application.
Thank you very much, Ms. Callen and Ms. Robinson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, and this is exciting to go for it again, so let's place this on the consent agenda for Monday, and thank you both.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, for the moment, that is all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Estes, and thank you to our CFO, Assistant City Manager, and Ms. Erica from HR, Ms. Robinson. So you are on the Planning and Development Committee, if you don't mind, and would be so gracious enough to take this committee for me this evening.
I mean, as if I could say no.
Well, you could.
But of course I will.
Thank you so much.
But before we get started with the agenda items, I'm going to go over the ground rules for the Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
Some of the items on our agenda will require a public hearing. Before we begin those items, I'd like to briefly review the procedures we will follow to ensure an orderly and fair process. These hearings are conducted in accordance with the Georgia Zoning Procedures Act. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to ensure that all applications are reviewed fairly, impartially, and in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance and adopted land use policies. For each zoning item requiring a public hearing, we will begin with a presentation from city staff outlining the request of any relevant findings. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak. Following those presentations, the mayor and council may ask questions of both staff and the applicant. After that, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the application, please complete a comment card before approaching the podium. Comment cards are located near the entrance to the room and should be submitted to the city clerk. Let's just send it over there to our deputy and assistant city managers. Before you turn to speak, you will need to include your name, address, the item you wish to address, and if possible, any specific questions you'd like staff to follow up on. All comments should be made respectfully and directed to the chair. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and address for the record. If you ask a question, please understand that we will not respond immediately during the public comment portion. Instead, staff will attempt to address all questions at once before the close of public comment, provided the information is readily available. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. We will allocate a total of 20 minutes for comments in support and 20 minutes for those in opposition. This is not a debate. Interruptions, outbursts, or other disruptions will not be permitted. There is a general public comment period at the end of the meeting tonight, but the city council cannot hear. cannot hear additional public comment during that portion for a specific zoning item where a public hearing has already taken place. The mayor will cut off any public comment that refers back to a specific zoning item. As a reminder, the mayor has requested that there be no applause or other demonstrations during the meeting. Please ensure that all electronic devices are silenced. Anyone who disrupts the proceedings will be asked to leave. With all of that in mind, we will move on to the items on our agenda for tonight. And first up, item twenty-five dash three eight zero. Consider a request for plat approval to combine a one-point-four-three acre parcel with a point-five-six acre parcel into a single one-point-nine-nine acre lot at twenty-thirty-eight Highway ninety-two, located in Land Lot nine-zero-nine, District eighteen, Section two, parcel IDs zero-zero-zero-three and zero-zero-zero-nine. Application by Grant Shepherd and Associates, care of Michael Shepherd. And Mr. James Gordon will introduce this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. James Gordon, six-six-nine-five Church Street. This property is located twenty-thirty-eight Fairburn Road. It is actually just south of I twenty on Fairburn. It's right next to the QT. There is an existing house and a structure on the property. And then the second piece of property is a kind of a wetland right beside it, between that property and another commercial property. The owner is requesting to combine the two parcels for future development. And this is what the property looks like now. It's just a house and another garage back in the back. And he's just wishing to combine the two properties.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
So there are no known plans for development at this time. He's just joining the two parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
This was previously ultimate. It was previously came up a few years ago to be a liquor store, but it, that has since a proximity to another liquor store came about, and so those plans have been abandoned. And so the owner now is coming up with new development plans, but in the meantime, he needs to go on and combine it so he can make his development work.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any comments or questions from, yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
What is the current zoning on both parcels?
General Commercial, G.C.
Okay, so there's no, there won't be any need to change?
No, no rezoning. It's already G.C.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to leave these items on the agenda.
Okay.
So that the chairman and the vice chair can hear them on Monday.
Okay.
Next up, item twenty-five dash three eighty-one. Consider a request for plat approval to split a five-point-eight-zero acre parcel into a one-point-five acre tract and a four-point-three acre tract at eighty-six fifty Club Drive, located in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, parcel ID A zero-one-three. Application by HRC Engineers, care of Jeremy Bias. And Mr. Gordon will take us through this one as well.
Good evening. This property is located at eighty-six five zero Club Drive. It is actually the existing AT&T property. As you may be aware, this property is already going through variance and rezoning, and it's actually going to be combined to contribute to the town green redevelopment, which you heard discussed earlier. There's the existing building, which will remain, but then at the end, there's an acre-and-a-half lot that's just grass now, and that's the portion that's being split off and will become a portion of the town green redevelopment. And so that's, this is already, it's zoned general commercial right now, but then the apartment will rezone it to contribute to their causes.
Okay, seems straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item.
Okay.
Twenty-five dash three eighty-four. Consider a request for plat approval to combine a one-point-two-two acre parcel with a point-four-five acre parcel into a single one-point-six-seven acre lot at ninety-twenty Myrtle Drive, located in Land Lot twenty-two, District one, Section five, parcel IDs C zero-seven-nine and C zero-eight-seven. Application by SNS Land Surveying LLC, care of William Sims. And Mr. Gordon will lead us through this one as well.
Okay. This property at ninety-twenty Myrtle Drive is off of Campbellton Street, and it's on the high school side, between the high school and the golf course.
Yeah.
So, and it's right at the end of the dead-end street of Myrtle Drive. It's a large piece of property with a single house on it, and the resident is simply splitting, I mean, I'm sorry, is simply combining the two lots. There's a, kind of to the left of this picture here, there's a fenced-in area that has some outbuildings, and they're combining that area in with the main house so that they can allow it to be having one tax.
Okay.
And this is a closer picture of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
And move on to our next item, which is item twenty-five dash three seventy-eight. Authorize staff to refer to the Planning Commission, a text amendment, to the Unified Development Ordinance to require special land use permits for convenience gas stations and to establish additional regulations for front yard accessory structures. Application by the city of Douglasville, and Mr. Dana Gray will walk us through this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dana Gray, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Yes, this is a request for Mayor and Council to authorize staff to refer this to the Planning Commission. It is a text amendment to the ordinance to require a special land use permit for convenient gas stations, and also to allow gas station canopies in the front yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. So, for somebody to do a convenience gas station, they would need a slop, but they wouldn't need a variance for the canopy structure? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. God, Nicole's going to be jealous she missed this crew. Item twenty-five dash three sixty-five. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from R-two, Single Family Residential Detached District, to N-C, Neighborhood Commercial District, for point-three-seven acres at sixty-five-one-nine Spring Street in Land Lot twenty, District one, Section five, for parcel ID zero-zero-one-two. Application by the city of Douglasville. And again, we have Mr. Gray.
Yes, this is a city-initiated rezoning. The property located at sixty-five-nineteen Spring Street, which is currently zoned R-two, which is a single-family residential detached. Staff is proposing to rezone the property to Neighborhood Commercial District to better align with the character and land use of the area. So presently, at R-two, you cannot rent for a commercial use. So this will present a little bit of cleanup so that the landlord can rent out for commercial uses.
So, was the trophy shop operating out of compliance, or were they grandfathered in?
Well, based on the recent code, yes, but possibly at the time that they were allowed, possibly not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will open a public hearing to discuss this. So remember, we will have twenty minutes for people to speak in favor and twenty minutes for people to speak in opposition. So if anybody would like to take, would anybody like to come speak in favor? Okay, how about anybody wanting to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and Nicole is going to be so jealous.
I know.
And we will take this up again on Monday. And we move on to item twenty-five dash three sixty-seven. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from R-three, Family Residential Detached District, to G.C., General Commercial District, for zero-point-one-five acres on Fairburn Road in Land Lot fifty-two, District one, Section five, for parcel ID zero-zero-three-two. Application by the city of Douglasville. Mr. Gray?
Yes, this is a city-initiated rezoning for a parcel located on Fairburn Road, which is presently zoned R-three, Single Family Residential, and we would like to rezone it to G.C., General Commercial. The parcel is located between the Dunkin' Donuts and the Pizza Hut, so it's kind of a small sliver going back to a larger parcel, which is being proposed for a eighty-nine-room hotel with restaurants and offices. So if approved, the owner will join this parcel with the larger parcel at the rear and use this as an entrance to the hotel from Fairburn Road.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
I do. Didn't we?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Councilman Estes. Mr. Gray, didn't we already vote on something like this with the hotel before? I'm confused a little bit.
I think this is a different property owner. I mean, a different applicant for this same parcel. Yeah, it is. You considered this, but it was a different flag.
So it's not already, but it's already zoned for what we're talking about from when the person came in before, or they were through the application?
For the general commercial, it's zoned for the hotel.
Not this piece.
Yes. For the piece in the back for the hotel, but the sliver that we're talking about now is presently R-three, which is a residential zoning. So we're going to change that to G.C. so it matches, and they can use that for the entrance for their proposed hotel.
It's to make the access to the future hotel easier.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now we will hold a public hearing, and as before, we will provide twenty minutes for speakers in favor and twenty for speakers in opposition. And now I will see if anyone would like to come forward to speak in favor of this. Don't everybody jump at once. Okay, seeing none. Anyone would like to speak in opposition to this item? Again, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring, discuss this again on Monday. And we will move on to the next item, twenty-five dash three sixty-nine. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from L.I., Light Industrial District, to G.C., General Commercial District, for zero-point-five-eight acres at twelve-eight-eleven Veterans Memorial Highway in Land Lot one-ninety-one, District two, Section five, for parcel ID zero-zero-four-six. Application by the city of Douglasville. And once again, Mr. Dana Gray.
Okay, once again, this is a city-initiated rezoning. We're requesting to rezone Light Industrial to General Commercial on Veterans Memorial Highway. The Light Industrial no longer reflects the current and ongoing use of the property. It's limiting the ability for the owner to rent for commercial uses. So currently, they have an auto broker, commercial, artist studio, and construction office, and they used to have an accountant firm, law office, and a restaurant. So with this rezoning, this will allow them to rent to commercial businesses, because you cannot do that within Light Industrial zoning.
Sounds good. Once again, any questions or comments from mayor or council? Seeing none, we will start the public hearing. Same rules as before. Anyone care to come forward and speak in favor of this? Is there anyone interested in coming to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing nobody on either side, we will close the public hearing, and we will bring, discuss this again on Monday. And our last item tonight, item twenty-five dash three sixty-eight. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section four-point-zero-eight-B of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed in the front yard setback along Thornton Road of a lot of one-point-four-four acres at twelve-eighty Thornton Road in Land Lot six-seventy-nine, District eighteen, Section two, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-nine. Application by Umkara fourteen LLC. And again, we have Mr. Dana Gray.
Okay, this is a request for a variance to allow the canopy accessory structure in the front yard setback. This is the second phase of development. The first phase was the True Hotel. They split the parcels so that they can do a gas station, which requires the canopy. It's located across from the Hilton Garden, kind of close to the, I think it's the Kia dealership, across the street from there. So, that is their request.
Thank you. And is this something that would no longer come before council, assuming the previous items were approved?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we will open a public hearing and ask anyone to come forward to speak in favor of this item. Come forward, sir. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Krips. I'm a land planner, civil engineer, owner's representative, and applicant for this property. And it sounds as though, based on one of your earlier items, this property won't have to go before council anymore, but we were a little surprised that we had to come for an accessory structure being the canopy of the gas station. Now, I've worked on this property for about ten years as the original designer of the True Hotel, as well as this second-phase parcel that has always been a gas station idea. We are limited in the size of the property. It's one-point-four-four acres, so we don't have a lot of options as to where else we would put gas pumps of the canopy. But what we have done is we've designed the canopy to match the building facade almost exactly using high-grade quality materials, so it's not like a bricked-up canopy, which we see everywhere, particularly across the street in the racetrack, who has a canopy in the front yard. So, we are just requesting that you consider that. I'd like to leave the architectural drawings of the canopy with staff, council, clerk. And I'm open to any questions. We would greatly appreciate your support. And like I said, this has been a project, a long time coming. This is Phase Two, and as you know, we've had a good, successful True Hotel there by Hilton, and I think that property deserves some quality development, as we're going to continue to provide.
Thank you. I think you're seeing why we are removing the requirement of a council vote for a variance for a canopy structure. You just didn't quite make the timeline.
We didn't know that.
Yeah, but thank you. Any questions from mayor or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And that is all that we have for the Planning and Development Committee this evening. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking all these items.
Anytime.
Mr. Estes, you're on that committee, so thank you very much, and thank you to staff, to Mr. Gray and Mr. Gordon, and the applicants who came forward. Now, we'll move on to, we do not have any business under Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Also, Madam Mayor, we don't have any business.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I'll ask you to take the next two committees. The first one is Public Safety Committee, so I have Councilman Davis.
Yes, ma'am, anytime, like Mr. Ed Council says he said. Item A, adopt the resolution to adopt the updated Douglas County Multi-Judicial Hazard Mitigation Plan as Multi-Judicial Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official hazard mitigation plan of the City of Douglasville. Ms. Melissa, can you come down? Oh, that's not Melissa. Mr. Queen is dead, okay. I didn't look up, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. James Queen, Emergency Management Director for Douglas County, eighty-seven-hundred Hospital Drive. This is our standard update that we have to do every five years per federal law. We spent the last year working on it with our consultant, Bold Consulting. It's been submitted to GMA and FEMA. You're agreeing to adopt it based on whether or not it's approved by FEMA or GMA, if by both of them. If there are any changes, we will come back before you with those.
Okay, do we have any question from the Mayor and Council? If not, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving right along to item B. Consider a request for an alcoholic beverage license for the on-premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverage and spirit liquor at the following establishment. Proposed, Lic. D-M-C Restaurant Group, DBA, Fumee, cigar bar and restaurant. Locations seventeen, did I mispronounce it? Seventeen Cochrane Parkway, proposed Agent Allen Manager Avery Shanklin. And required fees have been paid to the Finance Department. Mr. Shanklin, please come down and state your name and your address for our record, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jonathan Stewart. My address is twenty-seven-eleven Finding Soak Drive. Uh, with me is Mr. Avery Shanklin.
Avery Shanklin, thirty-one sixty-nine, Lantana Way.
So what do we, what do we got here? And, uh, and who'll be managing this?
Uh, Mr. Shanklin will be managing. I am the attorney for DMC Restaurant Group. DMC Restaurant Group is a, um, a restaurant group that has operated and interests in restaurants throughout Georgia. And this particular restaurant, we've been developing for about a year and a half now. Really excited about this, and this is the final piece of the puzzle to get us up and operating. If you have any specific questions about the operations, Mr. Shanklin will talk to you about it.
And you have experience in, uh, management, alcohol, food ratio, and experience?
Yes, sir, over ten years.
And give me some of the, uh, restaurant you had experience in working. You're in Douglasville now.
I'm in Douglasville now. Uh, Shee, Swan Yay, Trap City Cafe.
And all in Atlanta, the City of Atlanta.
Yes.
All in Atlanta, so you know about the percentages?
I do. Sixty, forty.
And, yeah, how do you go about training your employees?
Oh, tips. Tips training, so every one of our, um, employees that be serving alcohol will be required to go through that train of tips.
And one moment before I open up to the Mayor and Council, operating hours and ventilation, have you been inspected and approved?
Yes, we have. Operating hours will be, um, Monday through Thursday, uh, four to midnight. And Friday through Sunday, well, Friday and Saturday, eleven to one.
Eleven to one AM?
Yes. Yes.
And not open on Sunday?
Oh, we are, but we gotta, we gotta judge it and see how the crowd goes out here.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman, um, Davis. I appreciate it. Thank you all so much for coming in this evening. Um, we're excited to always have new businesses come to the City of Douglasville. I've been to the establishment. It's very nice inside, so it's Fumay, is that correct?
Fumay, Fumay.
Fumay. It's next to Per Se. Just get to get all this French stuff. Um, yes, sir. So, but, um, and so it's a cigar lounge as well, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so Councilman Davis did ask about ventilation and all that type of thing. I know in that one room, when you come in, you go to the right where the chairs are and the TVs and all of that. So you do have proper ventilation from the Health Department and on, I mean, when you go to the cigar lounge, you know what you, what you're doing. You go into the cigar lounge. But, so it won't, will it come in the next room, or how does that, how is that?
We got top-notch ventilation. You can't, you can't smell nothing. Once the, once you click that button, all the smoke goes out, so.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Davis.
Is this the former, former homeowner? Your homeowners used to be. Okay. That's all.
Bringing business back.
Councilman Estes? Uh, one more question. Uh, we have the, uh, Hooker. A Hooker, or whatever we pronounce.
Careful with pronunciation.
No Hooker. No Hooker.
Repeat it again.
No Hooker.
Say it slowly.
No Hooker.
There you go.
Yes, sir, no Hooker.
Okay, I'm glad to know that. Okay, gentlemen, since we don't have any, any, uh, just come back on Monday and, uh, we'll hopefully have a good decision.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I'll ask if you wouldn't mind taking Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee as well.
I sure would, I'm on the road.
All right, thank you.
Item A, authorize the mayor to sign a service agreement with the Cultural Arts Council of Douglasville, Douglas County, in the amount of hundred-thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the purpose of promoting business growth within the city through promotion of cultural arts. Ms. Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Davis. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. As you know, this is a routine agreement with the Douglasville Douglas County Cultural Arts Council to provide cultural arts services for the city. This year, the amount increased from one-hundred-twenty-seven thousand to one-hundred-thirty-seven thousand five hundred, um, to assist with the planning and execution of the Douglasville Beer and Wine Festival.
So you're saying that it was an increase, uh, ten thousand dollars? What are, what we gonna get but an extra ten?
Yes, so, um, if you all recall last year, the original document or the original agreement was one-hundred-twenty-seven thousand. And then later in the year, uh, we came before you, staff came before you, for an amount of, uh, of ten thousand five hundred to help with planning and assisting the Beer and Wine Festival. So instead of doing two separate agreements like last year, um, we combined the two amounts to total a little over one-hundred-thirty-seven thousand.
So what is the response we got from the Beer and Wine Festival after we, I mean?
Um, well, I was there. I can't tell you the exact numbers, or we can pull. We, we do have exact numbers for that day that they were there. I would say it was probably, probably five hundred to seven fifty in the amount of participants as it relates to the Beer and Wine Festival, um, on that Saturday, as well as there was a band, um, and other individual, other organizations such as the Douglasville Water and Sewer Authority, um, Graystone Power was there, giving out information, um, as well as food as well.
And they had to pay, charge a fee to get in.
Yes, sir, there was a fee to get in.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any questions from the Mayor and Council?
I don't have any questions.
Come back on Monday, we'll, we'll, if you get your, come back on Monday, thank you. Since some of the colleagues are here. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I appreciate you taking those two committees for me. Um, we don't have any business under Technology Committee. And Mayor Pootem, you started out the committees. I ask you to finish with Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're bringing home.
Your vice chair.
We have two items tonight under the Transportation Committee. The first is to adopt an ordinance to amend the list of roads for the speed detection device permit. Ms. Alicia Mann?
Alicia Mann, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Previously, before I came, when I came before you for the, um, speed detection device permit, staff was asked to look at a list of residential streets in the downtown area. So we have done the studies for traffic counts as well as the speed data, and we have put them on our G-list of roads so that we can set that speed limit as well as ensure that our police department can use their, um, radar devices to enforce that speed.
And these are all downtown streets?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any questions from the Mayor or Council? Okay. Um, that seems like a good list. I will hold off on the consent agenda, because I know that, I think, if, uh, yeah, Daphne Bernanley wants to have any questions about this. She had some issues last time. I'd like to give her an opportunity to discuss that. So, okay, we'll, we'll have that on the agenda for Monday, and we'll discuss it again then. Um, the next item is to authorize the mayor to sign a renewal request letter to the Georgia Department of Public Safety for the speed zone permit for the purpose of amending speed limits.
Alicia Mann, six-six-nine-five Church Street. This is just the renewal request letter, um, of support to go with your permit application.
With the last item, okay. All right. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. All right. Um, so we'll also leave that off the consent agenda for Monday, so. All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Mann. Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pootem, Vice Chair of Transportation. Um, do we have any other business to come before Council tonight from the elected officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor, neglected to make a, a, a comment to add the, um, Economic Development Committee item to the consent agenda. There's no objection to that regarding the tax incentive plan?
I don't think there's an issue with that.
So let's add that to the consent agenda. That's all, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, Saturday is the culmination of our year-long, I'm not sure if we're gonna have any other events, but, um, for the hundred-and-fiftieth, um, City of Douglasville anniversary. Eighteen-seventy-five, and now is two thousand and twenty-five, so we've been around for a hundred and fifty years as a city. I'm not sure if, you wanna come and talk, Ms. Emily, about the events that are gonna take place on Saturday at the Town Green?
We can't make any jokes, because Joel's not here. Ask him, tell us what it was like, if he remembers, uh, what it was like back then.
No, we're gonna not make, Mr. Dotson, or Ms. Emily, if you don't mind.
Uh, Emily Hardaway, uh, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Yes, so this Saturday, uh, we will have the city's one-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday bash. Um, throughout this year, we've been having different ward block parties, um, in each ward to kind of celebrate the one-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, and this is the culmination, um, of that celebration. Uh, the event is at the Town Green from twelve PM to five PM. Um, we're gonna have lots of food trucks, uh, the, we're partnering with the Cultural Arts Center to have a lot of art vendors, um, who will be out selling art. Um, we're gonna have lots of fun activities for families. There's gonna be inflatable activities. Um, there will be a charact- caricature artist out there. Um, and we're also gonna have live music, um, from one to five PM. Um, so the event itself kicks off at twelve, and then starting at one, there'll be, um, live music. At twelve, uh, we'll have a special ceremony with the mayor and the CAC. And the first fifty people who attend will get a free funnel cake. So, we encourage people to be there at twelve, be there at noon, uh, to help us kick off the celebration. But it will be a really nice, fun, uh, exciting event to celebrate one-hundred-and-fifty years.
Thank you so much, Emily. We appreciate that. We're excited, um, to, um, celebrate with the city and to see the entertainment and just to have a great time, a family time there. So we appreciate you bringing information to us. Um, we did have a successful concert that was not rained out this past Saturday with Gerald Albright. It was really nice. The jazz was nice. The, the day was just absolutely beautiful after the storm went by. Um, and our next concert, I think, is October eleventh, and that is Gavin de Grau. Is that correct? Okay. So, uh, we look forward to that. So that's all the announcements I had, I believe. So we'll move on to updates from city staff. Um, we will not have a report this evening from our city attorneys. We'll yield to have city manager report anything that we need from the legal department. Um, our police department, Deputy Chief J.R. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Um, our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Nothing from the city manager's office, nor legal.
Okay, what? Okay, comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that may be determined to the City of Douglasville. Thank you. I don't see anyone. If we don't have any takers, as Councilman Davis can say, we don't have any other business. This meeting is adjourned.